Because somebody was telling her a story and the realtor was leaving the light on.
And that could very well be. You'd be surprised if we.
Yeah, I went through there. I went searching through. Took my dog with me.
Freaking out.
Hope I don't find him.
Hi, the closet.
He said, was planning on putting 200,000.
But yeah, it's gonna do no good if he goes banging on the front door without.
Cause they're gonna go out the back door.
Yeah, 13 years. I'm glad you're finally gonna get it done. But Francis said about five years before we bought it, that he and his fiance were fixing it up. And fiance broke up with him. But the fact he still has what first fiance bought him her money.
My little heart.
Alright. Okay, we'll call tonight's meeting at order, May 13th, 2014, Dickens County Planning Commission. We'll start with roll call.
Sure. James Hestrom.
Here.
Diane Anders.
Here.
Scott Wong.
Here.
Jennifer Elliott.
Here.
Wally Wolf.
Here.
Claire Anderson.
Here.
And Addison is Donita Felch.
Alright, we need to approve the minutes from the March 11th, 2014 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? To these minutes?
I would move that we approve them as written.
What's seconded?
It's been moved in seconded that we approved the March 11th minutes. All in favor, raise your right hand. opposed. The minutes have been approved. Okay, next on the agenda is the yearly reorganization of the planning commission. Dustin, would you like to?
Sure.
Leave some discussion?
That means that one of you guys has to, or gets to, or you know, refuses to, volunteer to be chairman and vice chair. As part of that. And then after that, there's a couple of the things, but that's what I would let you guys decide to hammer out first. Currently, Jennifer took over for Gary Mitchell when, because he was chairman and she was vice chair. And then they put Wally as vice chair. And so, both of those are valid to maintain or to switch out, so.
You guys both good with continuing?
You okay, Jen?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I would just move.
Unless somebody else wants.
No.
And nomination ceases.
Okay. James, when I had moved to maintain for the year.
Seconded.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded that we maintain the offices as, as they are right now. All in favor, raise your right hand. All of those?
Now, just so you guys are aware, that means these two can't hold office next year. So, keep that in mind.
Hey, years a year. You may want to start thinking about that now, because based on his statement, you got time to cut and run.
He shouldn't bring that up till next year, reorganization, even everybody's present.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, what else do we need to decide tonight, Dustin?
Um, I've got a couple of things I'd like to talk to you guys about. The biggest one being that I would like to take, and I've kind of mentioned it in passing before, but I've kind of got everything in place to, to roll the ball on it. I'd like to take, we have a board called the Border Zoning Appeals. Some of you know about it, some of you don't. It's essentially a board that meets anytime in my office. If somebody comes up and says, "I want to build a garage, but I want to build it five feet from my property line instead of 50." The board, you know, then that request for, an exception goes in front of them. If I look at them and say, "No, you can't do that, but here's the process to go around me," that Board of Zoning Appeals has the process to go around me. What happens there is it goes Border Zoning Appeals, and if they don't like that, then it goes District Court. It's a separate board from the Planning Commission, but it can be made of the same members. Before I started, my predecessor had separated the board out. Before she was here, they were joined. And I've talked to several counties around and they find it very, very efficient to have them joined. Because you guys meet far more often than they do, so you're up on, up to speed on the regulations and the changes we've made. Not to mention, it allows both, you know, both sides to see if, if somebody, if we get 12 or 13 requests for something in a year, obviously that regulation needs to be changed. Or at least, at the very least, looked at. And so, I would like to start kind of merging those two boards, but I wanted to talk to you guys about it first, because I didn't just want to drop down and go, hey, guess what you guys are doing now? That board hasn't met since I started. Now, I anticipate it starting here soon, because I'm starting to get more pushback. When you're new, people tend to take what you say, and now they're starting to push back a little bit. It's not a big deal. Most of it is actually in a, in land division. So, that's when I go, look, if you want to try that, you can, but you have to plan it. So, but I imagine here soon, it's gonna start going the other way for some things. And I'd just like to be prepared before it happens. It may not happen. And like Wally said last time, we talked about it, you know, if we're doing our job and making sure the regulations here are good, and I'm doing my job, we shouldn't see that, those come up that often. I think you guys met one, once or twice a year.
I think twice the entire time, yeah.
So, you know, it doesn't meet that often. But how it would work is the meeting nights would be the same. You wouldn't have to worry about coming in a different night. It would be, we'd start whichever one it was, roll through that meeting, and then start the next one as a separate board.
So, it's not really merging the two boards into one, it's really just, we're on.
It would essentially be, it would essentially, and I'd have to change the regulations to state that, and this is what you guys would be voting on, is that I would change the regulations to say, to state that the Planning Commission shall serve as
Okay.
the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that's it. And then the county would have to pass a resolution that says that, that that's okay. And then you guys would operate just as the Board of Zoning Appeals would, as a separate entity, but just with the same members. There's really, the other side of the responsibility is that, you know, you guys get to determine who can get exceptions and who can't, and what those are for.
Dustin? Can I also say that I think when I was on that board, there were a total of three of us. Two meetings I went to, only two people showed up.
Yep.
So, I think that having more people is probably a better thing as well.
And, and, and I have noticed that it was, that it was reduced quite quickly after it was split apart. And I'm not sure what that was about, but I think that the more people I have on the board, the better. And I prefer to have seasoned people who are in front of the regulations more frequently than once or twice a year.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How, what? If I was on the other side of the table and I had an appeal, and I was, I was before the same people called two different boards, how would the perception be of the public when they're trying to come to us saying, hey, these guys are just switching chairs?
The beauty of it is, is they're two separate things. If the plant, let's say you guys go through and deny a conditional use permit. If they file an appeal, that still goes to the county commission and the court. You don't see them again. Now, let's say that they want an exception to a rule. They come in and they talk to you about that exception. The Planning Commission doesn't ever dictate anything that the Board of Zoning Appeals does. So, the beauty of it is, is that unless it's through regulation change, but the beauty of it is, is if they come in and they have a grievance, they see the Board of Zoning Appeals.
About already stated.
About already stated regulation. The Planning Commission helps to allow for, you know, splits, business creation, stuff like that. So, they serve two different purposes. So that, so they won't see you switch chairs. You won't have to go.
It won't be a conflict.
Right. You won't have to go, "We're gonna deny this conditional use permit, but you can ask us later for permission." You guys don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if that would be perceived.
Yeah. That permission then goes up to the county commission or the court. So, depending on which side, the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Planning Commission. So, you guys don't ever have to worry about the, the conflict. Now, I assume that, you know, somebody's gonna go, wait a minute, I came in here and asked you guys for permission on this. Why couldn't I have done this then? And that, you know, that's up to me to that, at that point, to describing why they're two different boards. But I got about a page and a half worth of, of a response from Dave Girod over in Gary County, and three or four other counties, Saline County, even Cedric County. And they all said, you know, joining the board was one of the better things that they'd ever done. So, I kind of wanted to, you know, follow suit, but I think it's a, a better idea in general. So, if you guys are okay with that, I'd like to move forward with getting that in front of you. It probably wouldn't be till July or, or August, so.
Do you need a motion tonight to that?
No, just now. It, it would be when I bring the regulation in front of you guys. So, I just wanted, but if you guys are like, no, don't want to do it, I wasn't gonna worry about, you know, adjusting the regulations and stuff. But if you guys are interested in it, then I'll go ahead and do that. Cause the county would just dissolve the current one and.
That's the way it used to be.
Yeah.
I mean, when we were, long time ago, Wally, it was that way.
Yeah.
Okay. If you guys are alright with that, I, I'll move forward with that then. The second thing is the next, we will have a meeting next month. And I would be prepared for it to be a long one. It's gonna be over the proposed subdivision of Daisy Road and 1700. Now, they've got some pretty, some pretty good stuff in their, in their covenant to suggest that they're gonna make people sign a rule, you know, a rule living agreement when they do their stuff. Now, obviously, that doesn't necessarily protect people from being, from lawsuits, but it certainly gives a lot more ammo to the people who are on the other side of it. Because if they sign those agreements, you know, they've already stated, they understand dust and, you know, smells happen. And as such, I've, I've talked to the county counselor, and I am actually okay in putting forward an agreement. Cause we've talked about it in some depth before. But, and I talked to Saline County, cause they do the same thing. Saline County has a rule agreement that if you build a house out of the county, you sign this agreement, says you understand that you're in a rural area and farming happens and, you know. And so, I'm probably gonna start doing that on my infability permits for houses too, now that I've been okay to do that. So, there's kind of gonna be a double layer of protection there. But they've been approved for their water. They've, you know, we've already met with the engineer and stuff to get the, the road layouts and stuff. They're gonna be responsible for their own road. They're looking at probably 14 houses on 10 acre lots. But it's, you know, 160 acres and, so I can, I can foresee some people not being happy about the large addition of houses out there, which I completely understand. So, but I just want you guys to be prepared that that will be next month, so.
Would that be on the 10th?
I believe so, yeah.
Can I renege on that, Stan, I need to, uh?
Why do you think, why do you think I had you guys do that first?
Haven't I already run one of these really long?
The first one.
But I, and I don't, the, the subdivision itself is not gonna be that difficult, because they don't, they're building their own road. They've already got, they'll have public water. Randy's already talked to about sanitary sewer. They're on 10 acre pieces. He said they're gonna have to put in some, you know, more advanced septic, but. So, the, the availability for building houses and the maintenance involved is not gonna be much on, in terms of what the subdivision does. The big thing's gonna be the, the the change to the area. So, whether that's gonna be a detriment or not. And so, that's, that's what's gonna be probably the, the rub. Which, you know, again, I completely understand and, and you know, I've, I've heard some for and some against, so. From the public, of course, no one's doing anything in writing. It's, you know, just kind of passed down the line. So, I can't count it's official unless they just, you know, unless they actually are willing to write it down or come to the meeting. But I think it's gonna be a little charged. I don't necessarily think that it's gonna be, you know, a violent outburst kind of thing, but I think it's probably gonna be a little charged, so.
What's the address again?
1700 and Daisy Road.
Is it at that intersection?
Yeah, it's the, it would be the northwest corner, so by the Cossettes.
How do you spell it?
C.O.S.S.E.T.T.E.
Thank you.
So. They're turning 160 acres into, they've got a pond and, you know, walkway around the road and stuff like that. They've, they've already got their, their topography and all that jazz, so.
I drive by that every day. That's right on, it's on Blacktop, then?
Yeah, it's on Blacktop. And, and so, and it's, they're gonna have the Daisy Road gravelled up to their, their road. And then they've got a road that they're gonna maintain, that the homeowners association is gonna maintain, like Red Bud Lake. And then they're on the pavement.
So, be convenient to check out, then.
Be down there Red Bud Lake, really. They take really well. Just saying.
But they, they're, they're talking about, I think they'll have at least Jack here. He's the, he's the guy that's kind of the project lead for it, so.
What's the value of the houses?
Well, they're talking in the 400,000 plus range.
Wow.
Now.
So, that's one thing we have to consider is the tax.
They're, they're obviously, you know, I, if they put that in the covenant, stuff like that, that's one thing. But otherwise, you know, we can't, unless they come right out and say, we're talking about, you know, having a minimum of, we can't dictate that. So, we have to assume that somebody could go out there and build a $40,000 house. I doubt they would, considering the land's probably gonna go for 50,000 or 60,000. But you get the, you know, you get the picture. We have to think about that, unless they flat out say, no, the covenant says, you know, your, your building cost has to be, yes, you can.
And it doesn't take much to spend 400,000 on a house nowadays, a new construction. It really does that.
So, there, there are a lot of factors in this that if, to give you an example, if all the houses are at $400,000 and no less, and it's only, let's say they only do 10 houses, that's $80,000 cash and man tax value, at the current mill letting. So, that's, you know, the township gets a good bump. Everybody gets a good bump for that. But, then you have to kind of weigh that with everything else, so. So, that's where it's gonna be tumultuous, because, you know, you can see benefit, but you can also see detriment.
And that's probably a bedroom community for Salina, wouldn't it be? I mean, just, just saying, so, I mean, in theory, for the most part, the odds would be, and so, you.
They own land in, the same people own a lot of land in Saline County too, but they chose to come to this side because the taxes were less.
So, those folks who live there, they'll have to have some way to get to town, so they'll probably register their vehicles in Dickenson County, and their boat, and their building, and their ATVs and whatever else.
And their, and the idea is, is they want 10 acre lots specifically, so that these people could raise a couple of horses, some cattle, stuff like that, so.
What's the estimate for how long before it's built?
I know that he has said that he's got probably five or six people already interested.
So, it's half. He's half home, he's halfway there already.
He's done his work.
Well, and then, you know, and I'll be honest, when I, when he came into my office, I said, you know, I'm gonna level with you. There's a lot better positions for this in Saline County. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna operate under two assumptions. One, the tax base here is less, or the tax dollar here is less. And two, the building restrictions are less. That means you've probably already got some of these sold. And he said, "I wouldn't be here if I didn't." So. So, he's gotta have enough of them where he's already got the engineering plans completely done.
And has John Goff reviewed those?
He, John Goff, I had a, I had a meeting with John Goff, Randy, Martin. And John stood in for Martin, cause Martin had a death in the family. But, and then Jack and his, and his developer, and we all sit down and, and discuss.
And that included in your report too, is what?
Yep. So, cause that's part of it. If you guys need more time on this, if you guys, you know, if we have a meeting and you guys are sitting there, and after an hour and a half, you guys are like, you know, I don't have time to think about this, take it. Put it off for a month, if you have to. Don't be afraid to do that. Don't, you know, if you don't want to make the decision that night, table it till the next month, or the next week, or whenever you guys are available. Do not be afraid to do that.
Well, yeah, this is gonna take a lot of study.
So, and I, I've asked for all the information, so I can get it to you guys about a week in advance. I know that's not much time, but there's a lot of information for me to put together. I have to have a lot of it in place before the public hearing, so I'm hoping to get as much as I can before public notification.
I'm trying to place where, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I'm trying to place where the silage pits are along that road. It's not driving every day, and in the summertime, it gets pretty ripe. So, the parts you were talking about, those people are gonna have to realize, you're moving into the country.
And that's, that's why, that's why I brought, they're putting, in their covenant agreement, in their homeowners association agreement, they're gonna have a rule thing, and I'm actually gonna start implementing that now that I know I can.
I saw Rancher shut down on his home place in Ottawa County because of that. Somebody put a house in a mile away from him, and they complained about Sand Creek only ran when it rained. And he had his feedlot by the house, and Sand Creek was by it. And he cannot, can no longer raise cattle in his feedlot.
Yeah, like I said, there's, there, you know, there are obvious perks and obvious detriments to something like this. So, the beauty of it is, is there's no, there, there's no flood plain on the property. There's no, there's a, do you know where the dog farm is to the, there's the.
Whose dog farm?
I don't know the name.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you get west of them.
I don't know people.
And I don't like people, so we're okay.
The dog farms are the west of them. That's, that's, that land adjoins this.
Oh, wow.
I know where you're talking.
So, that, that, that big dog farm.
Oh, good lord.
So, the people on the, on that side then, they'd have no reason to complain.
So.
Yeah.
The dog farm, they wouldn't complain.
No.
About, you know, those 10 people having dogs barking and whatever, that would be non-essential.
And then across, across from Daisies, where I want to say Ingle or Emig live, their house is for sale right now. And that's where they live in Finks, or across the street-ish from them, up the hill a little bit, so.
My wife wants that house. Thank God I don't have any money.
So, that's, that's your general area right there.
Okay.
You know, there's a hill there that we had to deal with for their road, cause their road was kind of not quite 800 feet from the top of the hill. So, we've had to rework that. There's been a lot of rework in this already, so. But, like I said, you guys, thankfully, it's not on my head to decide that. I'll just provide the information I can, and it's up to you guys, so. And the county commission. The final, the final decision even isn't yours, so.
I've lived in the country 20 years, and this is the first place we've lived at. And we bought it in the times we were out there down by Hope. It was beautiful, air was fresh. And then that first spring, we smelled the feedlot. It smells like a hog lot. And I'm like, wow, wondering where that's coming from, but that's life.
Yeah. So, the, you know, and, and the developer, you know, that's, that's the thing is, you know, the developer is only the guy who owns the land and stuff. Their only, their only protection in that, that they can offer is, is their covenant agreements, so. And I think that with the idea that they want people to be able to raise cattle and stuff on there, that's why they're going for, they are going for rural residential. You know, kind of lends itself to the people that, that'll probably be buying this, will know, you know, but raising four or five ton of cattle is completely different than being downwind from a feedlot.
Yeah, a couple hundred horses.
Well, is there a limit on livestock? Because you, I have seen places that they have entirely way too many horses on 10 acres. I've went by and counted a dozen on some places, and that's, it, it just turns into dirt and mud.
Have basically ax protected.
Yeah. So, they can put however many they want on it.
So, at that point, it becomes a, you know, are they, are they criminally liable? You know, are they not taking care of them? Is KDH, does KDH need to get, you know, KDHE need to get involved because of water and stuff like that?
I thought there was an acreage limit on, I thought you had to have so many acres before you could have a horse on your property.
10.
You have to have 10.
For horses, and you have to have at least, actually, I think it's five now. For, for, for a dog farm, you have to have 10, because there's, because of the waste problem with dogs. But otherwise, it's, it's five.
If there's a regulation on how many acres you have to have to have one horse, why is there not a regulation of how many acres you have to have per horse?
Because nobody ever set it up. And, and honestly, policing that is almost impossible.
And he, people do.
If you had 10 acres, it's considered that.
Horses are around.
So, if I got 150 acres.
You know, they'll put them on one.
I can put 300.
My kids had horses, my wife's just.
We just finally got horse free after 20 years.
They may have in their restrictive covenants, the, the numbers at which they're going to allow them to have in the neighborhood. You can have only so many calves, so many, there, I, I have a feeling they'll have that in their covenant.
The covenant that they're talking about is about this thick. And they, they're, they're.
It's gonna be probably more restrictive than you think.
They're not gonna let you, you know, they're not gonna want you to build, nobody's gonna want to build a $400,000 house and live right next to somebody who has 20 horses they want to raise.
So, they, they borrowed, they borrowed from a, from a, an agricultural suburb out of Boston. And then they're, they're redoing it, so.
And is this his first development, or this is, he's done this before? Do you know? Can we ask that question?
You guys can ask that all day long. I can't take that into consideration, but you guys can.
Okay.
So.
I didn't know, maybe he just shared that information.
Even if he did, I wouldn't tell you.
Well. The hell.
It's not my purview to make that decision.
I know, I'm just teasing you. Just trying to trick you up.
You keep talking like that, I'm gonna make a motion for adjournment.
But other than that, happy news. That's all I've got. And I know for sure it'll be next month, cause they, they got everything.
When's gonna be the date on the, on the 10th?
Didn't you say?
10th, yeah, right, the second Tuesday. So. And I'll get the information out to you guys as soon as I can.
And the neighbors already know, apparently.
I have.
Because people don't know how to shut up.
Well, I've, I've heard through the, I've heard through the grapevine that a couple of them have gone to liver.
Already?
To express their, to express concern, which is A, they're right, and B, I don't blame them. Because, and the thing is, is I didn't know what the official plan was until last week. So, nobody knows what the official stuff is, other than the landowner, our county engineer, and our highway, and our highway road and bridge.
What's it on right now?
Right now, Ag 40. So, by all technicality, they could split this thing up into three or four pieces and never touch my office. So, there are already the propensity to have four homes are right there, without ever touching my office. So, you know, how much more detriment is adding six? That will be the question. So, that's something else that I'll have in my report, so. I'm not afraid to say that out loud, but.
Is there any other subdivision in the county that is comparable to this?
No, really, cause they haven't done anything on that big of a scale. Most of them have been smaller. You know, like the Roland Coontz's subdivision up north of Talmadge is smaller lots. You know, they're three acres-ish, three or five.
How many houses are there with that one?
One or two. But they, I think they have the ability for five or seven houses, but.
Haran Ocean out by Brown's Park, that was a small, a smaller.
But, you know, and, and, and so, there, there haven't been, this is kind of an. In terms of market, this is a big thing that's going on in a lot of places around the Midwest and the, what I guess we would call the middle between the Northeast and here. Because there, there are a lot of places that are starting to do these larger farms, because people are moving out of the city just far enough to, to be out of the city, and they want to raise, you know, they want to raise animals and kind of be more self-sufficient. They're talking about having geothermal power out there. They're talking, you know. So, there, there's a lot of stuff that they're talking about doing for this place. It's just, you know, gonna be a question of how does it fit in with the stuff around it, and that's, that's gonna be the, the big thing.
Can I ask a dumb question? If they have geothermal power, is there like tax on their solar panels and that type of thing as well? Is that also a property tax? No?
The geothermal stuff could be, because what, what happens is, is if, if you're looking at two separate houses, and this is coming from you working in the appraisers office before this. If you're looking at two different houses, and one has geothermal and one has electric and gas, this one's obviously worth more. So, it will have a higher value. That will be a lot of times where that tax comes in.
Okay, I ask because my dad's in Arizona, and he said in Arizona, if you get solar panels, that is an extra property tax on your solar panels.
Could be. Not here. So, now, if it's commercial, if it's a commercial operation, they can pick that stuff up, because it's property of the, of the, of the commercial owner residence. We don't pick that up. The house could be valued more, not necessarily for solar panels, but something like geothermal, yes. Because of the amount of money it took to do that, and that goes with the house. So, you know, if you have two identical houses, and one is just on electric and gas, and the other has geothermal, and let's say they're both valued originally at 400,000, this one could be valued at 450,000 because of the excess cost of the geothermal. So, yeah, that will play into it, but not in terms of like personal property tax.
Okay. Your report, talking all about how this fits into our comprehensive plan.
This is, you know, it's, it's along the paved road, so it's a development area. You know, it's, they've got, the, the big thing, the, honestly, the big hurdle that I thought they would have is water. Because they're, they're just close there to Royal Water District Number Two's tower. And they thought it was a low pressure area, and their engineer, they, they've, they've already gone through Royal, Royal Water District Number, they've already been approved for 15 years. Not, they've been okayed, they've been approved. They could purchase them tomorrow if they wanted to. So.
So, the water capability is obviously-
So, the water capability is fine. I've talked to the engineer from Manhattan, because Royal Water 2 uses an engineer out of Manhattan, and he said that they'll, that they should have more than that for that size of homes. So. He said they're on, and I quote, "The right side of the tower." So, and he said that, and I don't know if I, I'll have to talk if I can put this in my report or not, but there was basically the hint that that kind of influx of cost would provide better equipment for that area for Royal Water to be able to supply more because they can upgrade their pumps in that area. Because, you know, those meters are $7,000, $8,000 a pot. So, that's all of a sudden an influx of almost $100,000 on meters alone.
So, it might benefit the people on the wrong side as well?
No matter what, if, if the houses are built, the tax dollars will help the area. You know, because there are two or three bridges in that area. The township doesn't have that many residences as it is. So, so the tax dollars will inevitably help, and so that is kind of a given. It's going to be, you know, down to if that's the, you know, if that location is congruent with the comprehensive plan, and if it's going to be a detriment to the farming around it, so.
I'd make a motion to adjourn if we're done.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, great.
Second.
So, the second, that would be adjourned tonight's meeting? If they will raise your hand, please.
Thank you, Dustin.
Yep.
We've been there for a long evening, I'm going to sit.
So, what's a long evening? This is going to be the first interesting one I've been to.
Well, I think the latest, I think the latest we've gone is 10:30, 11:00.
Wow.
But that was for, that was for our mothers. So, that was, we had a full house. They were up there, and this room was packed. We had standing room in the back. So, every chair, we could muster down here, it was full, and we had people standing, so. I don't think it's going to be that bad.